In that area in my.
Really?
Um, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing.
I think she probably didn't have the number of DTPW readily available. Couldn't look it up while she was driving, you know? I don't know. Um, she's, she's.
It's being taken care of. It's probably done already.
Bring this guy into the zoom again.
Couldn't look it up while she was driving, you know? I don't know. Um, she is.
I can hear you Irene, just so you know.
Yeah, well, we, it looks like the mic is on. Now the camera's gone, but. Not that you don't have a pretty face, but we need to hear the conversation more than we need to see you.
There you go.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see if we can get it both for her.
And now I got no camera. I, I can't see him on the TV like, I, I got that damn test pattern. Oh, there he comes. There he is.
There he is. Look at that.
Hey, you can hear us?
Yep.
We're good.
Okay. Things are working.
We're good.
Yay.
Nice.
Alright, thanks Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Bye.
Right, so seeing how it's already filming.
Oh, yeah.
I'll call the meeting order at seven twelve. This is the Board of Selectmen meeting October fifteenth. If everybody can join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you very much. And as you can see, we have a visitor today on screen. This is Brandon Knox with Dakra. And Dakra is the company that we would be working with if we decide to go through with this automated traffic enforcement safety devices. We, what I want to do is I want to move seven A up to after we approve the agenda and I'd like to make that change to the agenda. And I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So.
Second.
Aye.
So again, Brandon Knox is here from Dakra. They're the company that does do the automated traffic devices. Brandon, just to catch you up in our last meeting that we had here with the Board of Selectmen, there was still a couple of questions regards to the contract. And I was trying to explain that there have been some changes made. And I think the last two questions we had was one, what happens? There's a ninety day cancellation that we can cancel due to anything, anything and everything up until ninety days. But what happens after that? What happens on day ninety-one or day one hundred and eighty-one or six months down the road? And we see that it's just not working for us and we want to cancel. That was one of the questions. And then the other question was in regards to the fees and the thirteen or fifteen dollars that we charge above and beyond the actual ticket. And then we have a situation where the ticket is not paid for by the person who received the ticket. We still have to pay that fee or do we not still have to pay that fee? So I think those were the two questions that we still had left unanswered. Um, I do have answers, but then I figured, you know what? I'm just gonna let Brandon come. He can give those two, those two answers. And then if you guys have any further questions, he's the guy to be able to answer the question. So, did I get those questions correct?
Yeah, um, is this the same company?
Yep.
That gave us the original presentation?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so Brandon, if you wouldn't mind addressing at least those two questions and then if my selectmen have any other questions, you know, we can go from there.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Madam Selectman. I appreciate the time tonight to let me come back. Uh, again, obviously I didn't realize that you guys were having this discussion again. But I do appreciate you bringing me back in. And as Irene said, we definitely made some changes to our contracts to make them more flexible to the communities. And ultimately let them get into programs such as this at a basically virtually no cost to the city. So, uh, first question was the termination clause. So in section F of our new agreements, um, and this has always been there, um, I'll actually read it verbatim. Notwithstanding any to the contrary herein, either party may terminate this agreement at any time, providing uh, a party with a minimum of ninety days advance written notice. So basically, um, your question was, or the confusion was, you know, what happens after day ninety-one? At any time, you can cancel it. You just have to give ninety days written notice to terminate it. That's it. So you're really not on the hook for anything, especially capital expenditures. Um, we actually got rid of our leasing of the cameras themselves and I'll kind of dive into that in a second. Uh, do you have any questions on termination though? Was I clear on that?
It, I, I, it was my question. Um, in my question, I, I understood the clause, but my question was if we decide six, seven, eight months in that this is not working for us for any number of reasons. And there's a ninety day, um, ninety day termination, which is what I believe the original contract said. We would still have to pay for your services for essentially three months, ninety days. That was my question.
Correct. And that is the old agreement and how it was, how it was interpreted. That was perfect. The new agreement says there is no lease fees on the cameras anymore. So if you decided to stop using the system and you give me ninety days written notice, basically there's no going to be other incurred fees. And in our cost neutrality clause now in the new agreement, basically, and I'll read it again, and I'll read this part because this is very important. Um, it says, upon the termination of this agreement in accordance with the relevant termination clause, any such unpaid rollover amounts owed to Dakratac are forgiven and no payment will be owed to the municipality. So basically if you stopped and there was like open, you know, services that we had already provided, those will roll over to the next month, but basically we're gonna, we're gonna forgive them completely. So there's gonna be no money owed to Dakratac after all services have been paid for. So at that point in time, you're, you're just done. So if you stop using it, you're done.
So I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. So if we stop using it, I'm just throwing out random months to, you know?
Mm-hmm.
We stop using it in June, we let you know in June that we don't want to use it anymore. There's ninety days between June and September. We don't owe any money for the camera or the service between June and September?
No, no, because it's, because it's not, there's nothing being used in that timeline because you would ultimately, I would assume when you give me ninety days notice, you're gonna just stop using the program altogether. So at that time, you wouldn't incur any more fees.
But that, that's new, right? That's in the new.
That is new, yes. That is our.
Okay.
That is new. That is in our cost neutrality clause, um, in the, uh, in the agreement.
So if we're not leasing the camera, where, are we buying the camera or are we?
No.
Where, so the camera's included with the service?
Correct. It is included in the per-service pricing. So the per-service pricing is based on, if you, if you want to picture it this way, each individual citation that's issued, if it's fully paid. So you issue it, you process it, the whole nine yards, it goes all the way through the process. The person pays the full sixty-five dollars for the first offense, thirteen dollars and fifty cents is what we charge, okay? The first six dollars of that, which is basically the processing, the inlets, lookups, the, uh, you know, the, the OCR-ing and then also the mailings, that is the original part of the bill, okay? We do not charge the additional money. So once it's paid, then we charge the other half of the money is how it was explained, okay? So we're not billing you for services that you didn't necessarily use. So if the person doesn't pay it at all and they ignore it completely, all you're on the hook for is basically six dollars. Okay? But with it being cost neutral, we never will bill you over and above what you didn't ultimately pay for. So it's always going to be neutral.
But there's no more two thousand dollars.
No more two thousand dollars.
Is it still a three-year contract?
It can be a three-year contract. Um, the three years, all it does is it price protects you. Um, and make sure that you basically, the, the fees that we have set in place on this agreement are set in stone for three years. And then we have to give you ninety day, if we choose to change the pricing, we have to give you ninety days and typically that's done through a negotiation.
So above and beyond the fees that get added to the ticket and are paid by the person receiving the ticket, what, what does the town pay for the service or the camera or both?
Correct. So the town is ultimately paying for the services of the mailings, the processing, everything that is included in the, the actual, uh, processing of the citations from all the way through the court hearings and closing out the, the file, that's thirteen dollars and fifty cents. So a fully paid citation would be, it's fifty dollars statutorily. You guys can add the fifteen dollar admin processing fee on top of it. So technically it's sixty-five, but I only take thirteen fifty of that sixty-five.
So no out, no upfront cost, no monthly fees?
Nope, nope.
That is vastly different.
Netted out every single month.
And what was presented initially?
That was a, a monthly, we were looking at a monthly to two thousand dollars.
Twenty-four hundred bucks.
And, and no minimum length of contract, correct?
Say, sorry, say that again?
No, no minimum length of contract?
No, no, there's no minimum length or anything like that.
So it's literally sort of just pay as you go kind of?
Correct, yeah. We will, so whatever money and revenues you guys collect, we need on our fee based on what's been paid. And then that's, that's ultimately what we get for our services.
So for our purposes, is it net thirty then? What if you bill monthly or billed per citation?
So the, the services are billed out, so when we go to net out everything, every single month, so let's just, for example, let's just say October, you used all the services, you collected a bunch of money. In the first fifteen days of the following month, which would be in November, we actually net out everything. We remit all the money that is owed to you. So we net out our fees from that point. So there's really no billing. There's no, you don't send us checks or anything like that. It's based on a remittance of money that's been collected.
So if everybody stops speeding and there's, you know, a month where no tickets are issued, you guys just don't get any money for real?
I, I mean, it, to, to be, to be honest, I mean, the idea is, is that I'm supposed to run myself out of a job based on behavior change.
So far that hasn't happened though, huh?
Uh, no, un- unfortunately habitual speeding is, is still a thing and, but the good thing is, is that the, that some of the data I saw you shared in the last council meeting, uh, there is some really good data that's out of Middletown. And Middletown has been able to, um, they dropped in the first two months ninety-two percent of all speeders that were reckless drivers, which we consider twenty and over reckless driving, they not, they dropped that by ninety-two percent. Um, they've overall dropped at about forty percent just in two months.
So when you say dropped, what does that mean? That they're no longer going twenty over? They're going fifteen or ten over now?
Yeah, the, the, all the people that were basically the, the, the twenty and overs from the start of the actual system, ninety-two percent of those people that were ultimately speeding, it dropped below that threshold. So nine, by ninety-two percent, it dropped that. And the ultimate goal is they're rolling it out in a, in a more, uh, uh, I would say kindler, gentler way with their community, which I think is smart because their resources, they're trying to make sure, because they have a lot of citations in Middletown. So one of the nice things that they did was, is they made sure that they do not issue citations habitually, but they also are trying to tamper down that, that speeding as much as they possibly can in specific points. The next step for them is to roll it out and they're gonna move down to fifteen miles an hour and over. And they're gonna work on those people now. So they're, they're slowly changing behavior as it goes along, which is actually very smart. Um, but the data has been, been spectacular so far. I, I would say from people ten and over, the ten and overs, and we track those as well. Uh, in the first month, when they started in July, they had about a hundred and sixty thousand, uh, people doing ten and over. That is now dropped to roughly about eighty thousand, just in three and a half months. So it, it does work and it, it, it will tamper down the speeds. Um, but that's probably the largest sample size, uh, in the state of Connecticut as of right now because I'm the only operational system in the state of Connecticut.
And Brandon, they just have one in Middletown, is that right?
They have a bidirectional location that is set up right now. The other three are operational. They're in school zones. Um, the school zones are, they, they don't have as much speeding in the school zones because people definitely knew right away, you know, once you put the signs in and the warning period goes in, they, they really know to slow down because there's people that drive exactly every, they do slow. So they get the hint very quick in those schools.
So when we talked to the, to the, um, Washington Selectmen, he said the DOT would approve up to three spots. So now that there's not a lease fee, could we get cameras for each, say, three spots that we get approved?
Yes, I, I, oh, I mean, based on the three locations that we originally ran the data on, absolutely, we can get approved for all three of those locations. You can get as approved for as many locations as you want, as long as DOT signs off on it. They have to have the, the crash data and the speed data and everything has to line up with, uh, what they're trying to, what you're trying to ultimately achieve. So we have not been to date pushed off or denied any locations. Um, but again, we're taking a very, I would say more conservative approach in terms of how many locations we're trying to light up uh, with communities and we really do that with the, uh, the data itself. So we're not trying to light up a bunch of locations that don't make any sense because it really, if it doesn't pass muster in DOT, then, then they won't give you, uh, permission on that. But we are very diligent on making sure that the selection process is done correctly.
Um, two questions. Um, Washington, when we spoke to him, he said that DOT would approve three at a time. I don't know if that's changed.
It's, it's not. It, 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 he might have been, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know if he misspoke or whatever, but they, you could ask for as many as you want. Um, I mean, Middletown is probably getting close to, they're bundling up a lot more locations because they have a lot more outcry and they, the city wants more, uh, of the system. So they're gonna be looking at possibly adding another, it could be from five to ten locations. So they're gonna do it all in one community meeting.
Right, and then, um, we had the three locations where you guys did the study. Um, one of the locations was Town Street, which is also Route eighty-two. Can we do it anywhere on that or do we have to do it where the test was done?
Um, we'll look at where the test obviously was done and then we will come out and do a site survey. Uh, so physically we'll come out and look at the location, make sure that the best possible location is selected because A, it needs to be on somewhat of a straight. B, signage needs to go into place. And then I would say C, definitely if this is going to be put in front of any residential areas, we want to make sure that we're, we're partnering with you guys on this. Because, and I'll go back to Jim over in, uh, Washington. He had one of the locations where a community member was not pleased with the camera being in front of his house after it got put in because he was fine with it at first and then when it went in, he was not so fine with it. So we have now removed that and we're moving it to another location. So we definitely want to work with you guys on that ahead of, you know, any site construction being done. But site surveys are, are definitely the best, uh, step to do that because we have to come out and physically look at them.
How invasive is the installation?
Uh, not very invasive at all. Honestly, it looks like a light pole. Um, uh, it's a four-inch pole with, and it looks very professionally done, uh, with a solar panel. It's probably two feet by three feet, um, but it's, it's not invasive. The, the gentleman was upset because it was blocking his, uh, sunrises off of his front porch. And it really wasn't blocking him. I just think he, he at first agreed to it and then he, he was not so happy afterwards.
One point that he brought up that I think is important, we talked about how many cameras, but bidirectional means two cameras on one road, so.
Right, one on going east, one going west, kind of in the same spot, yeah.
Correct.
I think on a lot of these, on a lot of these roads, you're gonna want to hit both, both ways.
Both directions, yeah, definitely.
Yes, yeah, allowing, allowing.
Is there, is there a cost for installation, for the site service, for maintenance calibration, anything? Like you guys are doing all this work for thirteen fifty a ticket if we actually, if we actually make back that money?
Correct, absolutely.
You really do want to put yourself out of a job, don't you?
We're trying. Uh, traffic safety is a, is a big thing, so it's, uh, as, as much as, you know, we, we always kind of go on the, uh, area on the side of caution, but secondarily, what you have to understand in the traffic safety world, it's about education, engineering, and then obviously enforcement. And I'm, I'm sure you've done the first two, uh, very well. It's just now the third one is now coming in and they all kind of work collectively together. And not everybody's gonna, your, your residents are gonna know. They're gonna, they're gonna slow down. Uh, the residents are gonna be the ones that are gonna get the hint first. It's all the people that come through your town. And we have the ability to run the analytics on where those people are from as well. We have heat mapping and it'll show you exactly where these people are coming from too. So you can review that during your council and have that reporting at your fingertips through the system and look at it and be like, okay, we, we changed the behavior in East Hattam, but maybe you, we need to work on campaigns or, you know, making sure that our social media is up to date, you know, and pushing out the message that it's not okay to speed through East Hattam. And try to get the other neighboring communities to comply as well.
Anything else?
I don't think so. I think I, I just had the cost questions, the initial cost questions, with that all went away, so.
Yeah.
This is a whole new ballgame.
It is, so we had to adapt.
We probably have to send.
Yeah, so, um.
And then your, your ordinance still needs to pass.
Right, we still need to talk about the ordinance, um, without Brandon. And then this new contract, we want to get through our lawyer, just like we do with the other one. So we'll, um, do that. And if I have any further questions, we will get back in touch in regards to that. Thank you so much for being here tonight and, um, going through the technical difficulties that we had getting started, so thanks.
Because of the change in.
I appreciate your time.
Contract, the ordinance that we had originally drafted, because we had already got that kind of fine tuned down to where it was, you really were the speed was the one thing we were like up and, you were up and down with.
Yeah, we have.
This wouldn't change any of that ordinance stuff, this change in contract, right?
No, it would not change in the ordinance. Um, you know, from, from an ordinance standpoint, I, I know that the, the debate was the, uh, speed of, you know, which, which one to choose technically. Um, I would, I would always comply with what state statute is because again, at the, at the end of the day, uh, how we rolled out, uh, Middletown and some of these other places, you can adjust the camera settings and the filtering inside the software to abide by whatever rules you put in place. So those business rules could be not necessarily ordinance driven. It can be just driven by what you deem as worthy as, I want to cite anything that's fifteen and over or I want to do twenty and over, whatever it may be. So it's customizable. But it gives you more flexibility if the ordinance is set based on the state statute to go up and down if you please.
I actually want, one further question that just came to my mind. What actually triggers the camera? Like, if somebody, in the case of the gentleman who didn't want it near his house, was he concerned that it was gonna pick up, you know, him coming in and out or like a dog walker going, like what actually?
It's speed. So a vehicle speeding by over, so say your, your speed zone is forty miles an hour, it will only trigger at fifty. So anybody that's compliant, all it's doing is the camera has the ability to count vehicles. It will not take those plates. So if you went, you know, if you were going forty-one, all it's gonna do is say you went through it, but it doesn't know who you are at all. The only time it pulls a picture and we get to run the plate is when they actually do the offense. So, and it's all rear-facing, so we don't know who's in the vehicle because it is a civil offense and based on the state statute, it only goes sent to the registered owner. So there's no ability for me to know who's actually in the vehicle at all. And the reason they did that is because it is a civil penalty. It's not a, not a misdemeanor or criminal offense.
And it, and it only, the camera only picks up vehicular track? Like you don't see deer or people walking down the street or the neighbors or?
No, 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 it does not. It actually has to trigger. So it's a, it's a LiDAR-based system. So picture sixteen lasers all pointing at the lane and it's only gonna pick up specific, because it has, it has like optical character recognition, but it also can read cars as well. So it knows if it's a vehicle, if it's a civilian or something like that. But again, if a motorcycle went flying through it, it'll, it'll pick up a motorcycle for sure. I mean, you gotta be going fast, obviously, uh, in most areas.
That triggered one, one question for me, being Mr. Constitutional here. Is any of the footage recorded? So in other words, it can be used later for a criminal investigation?
It is, so it is your data, okay? So as a, as a town, the data is stored in Azure Government Cloud, okay? That is where FBI, CIA, that's where they host their data. So since Dakratac is ultimately a courtroom management system, uh, first and foremost, we take that data and privacy very, very seriously. So it's your data to do with what you please. So at that time, if you wanted to search and say, hey, there was a criminal. So, at that time, if you wanted to search and say, hey, there was a criminal, and we knew he was going this direction, he might have triggered the camera. You could go search the system and be like, let me run plate ABC 123, but to like give it out, we do not. We have actually privacy data, actually, I'll read it, it's in the data section of our, of our contract, and we cannot share data unless we get municipal permission, permission. So, that is another piece of the contract that we have to abide by. So, if you want to share data with anybody else, or you are prompting us to, we have to get your permission first before we even share the data.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tanya? Um, no, not for Brendan, I don't think so, thank you. Thanks so much, I appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, we'll be back in touch.
Appreciate it. You guys have a good rest of the night, and again, thank you for having me in tonight.
Yeah, thank you again. Also, I just wanted you guys to notice, there's a little piece of paper in here with something that Val and I found in regards to the funds that we do receive from the fines will be used for the purposes of improving transportation, mobility, investing in transportation infrastructure improvements, or paying for the costs associated with the use of the automated traffic. We found that in when we were looking at this with the state statutes, that there was specific things that you could use the money for, it's not like it can just go in and, you know, be thrown into the general fund. So, but it does talk about transportation infrastructure improvement, so if we wanted to do sidewalks, if we wanted to do crosswalks, if we wanted to do.
Pave roads.
Maybe paved roads, it could probably go into that, right, so, just so you FYI, so you know that.
Is that not in here?
That was in last week's package. Yeah, so that's, it's from the portal Connecticut, not go, so it's in there that, again, and this is going to change, because, you know, this is an ever-evolving program that the state is doing with the municipalities, but I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's also a stipulation in regards to, at this point, what we can use the funds for. So.
I think they kind of knew that there was some stipulation. I mean, they've changed it considerably, which is good, but it's almost too good, and that makes me question why any company would want to try to flip themselves out of business. You know, to go from, you know, a, a, a three-year minimum contract at $2,000 a month to, oh, well, if you don't make any money, we don't have to pay us, seems.
As a business person, I think that's a pretty smart move, because right now, we're talking unlimited cameras. You're going to hit a lot more roads, and you're going to be able to find a lot more people, and you're going to be able to change a lot more habits on a lot more roads. I think it's a pretty smart business move, in my, my opinion.
I'm not.
If I heard us talk the last time, and I was him, watching us, our discussion, and going, hmm, I'm not so thrilled, how are we going to afford this, blah, 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 and all of a sudden, he's coming back at no fees, no monthly fee, no initial upfront.
I mean, I can imagine, you know, you can't do a service, any kind of service out there, that's $13.50 if you're not, you're, you know, you've worked into the cost factor of that, that $13.50 per citation. They're making money.
But that cost didn't change, right? Wasn't it always $13.50? So, again, they went from buying the camera outright, to, no, you can lease it, but it's $2,000 a month, minimum, three-year contract, and within like a month or two, it's like, no, no, just $13.50. I'm not saying it's not a smart business move, I'm just saying, I'm cynical, and I feel like there's a catch somewhere, because I don't know how they could possibly be.
Our attorney's going to ferret that out.
Yeah, so I'm going to send it to the attorney, the new, the new agreement, or the contract discussion, whatever it is, and see if there's anything else that comes out of that. But I would hope that maybe in our next meeting, we can move to, let's do it, let's jump on this bandwagon and change some behavior. So, think about how you guys feel about the.
Your process moving forward, should you approve?
We have to do the ordinance, yeah, it's first. Yeah.
And then, the ordinance.
So, we're going to, next meeting, we'd have to have a motion set up to move it to public hearing.
If the, assuming the attorney gets back without it, and it has no issue.
Yeah, because you should, to bring this, just to bring this to the town meeting without having an introduction to the public, even though you've been talking about it for months.
Right.
You know, you have a public hearing on most of your ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Think about how many miles over you guys want. I don't know how you guys feel, I know we went back and forth around 15, or 10, or 12, or 13, or 20, or whatever, like, you know, do we want to do what Middletown did? Came out with 20 over first, and moving down, I mean, I don't know.
My gut originally was 15.
I think 15 is fine, I don't know that we have.
Because we said, you know, a lot of people travel at 10 over, that's just, that's just habitual, so you go to 11, or you go to, you know what I mean, so 15, I.
So, 15, I think, is pretty generous.
I think so.
So, think about it, see what you, see what you think, and then, you know, if we can, maybe at the next meeting, we can get approval on the contract, and then, move it forward to a public hearing, and we, at that point, I think we need to finalize the language in the ordinance for to have the hearing. So, we'll need to know that. You know, that she's beat over the speed limit. I think that was the only outstanding piece of it at that.
That's why I asked, if this contract changed any of the, because you pretty much had, if you look at the, in the packets that you've had over the various times, I think it's draft number two.
Right.
I labeled on the top, which is the latest one, and the only obstacle was the up and down on the speed.
So, that's a great point, because would we have to reissue signage and all this? Let's say hypothetically, like we did, like Middletown, they set it at 20, and they brought it down to 15. You can, I don't think the ordinance has to change, but do we have to notice it to the public?
I was kind of understanding him saying, like, and I should have asked this question when I had him on, so did they set it as a range? And not a set amount, because he said they're starting it at 20, like, did they set the ordinances like 15 to 20 miles over?
He didn't say the ordinance, he said the ordinance go with state statute, because they must leave it, so the municipality.
I'd want to see what state statute says.
Can manipulate that, that overage, but the way I understood it is, it's up to the municipality to do whatever they decide on, and they can regulate it, but I don't, my question is, and again, probably have to look at the statute, do you have to notice it every time you want to move it five mile an hour increment?
Let's say you put it at 15 and leave it.
That's my point.
I, I think that, like, are you talking about this, like, signage?
I think the signage just indicates.
Near the cameras?
Noticing it.
Such, and an automated speed thing is coming soon. That's what the signage says.
Right.
It doesn't say, you're getting a ticket if you're over 20.
To answer your question, and I think I, this is how I understand answering it, let's say we set it 20 over the speed limit. Public finds that out, it's 20 over, whatever, one day, we decide the traffic count, okay, pretty much 100% is doing 20 over. We want to move it to 15. Do we have to then go and renotice it to the public that we have now switched it to 15? Because again, you've created habit. They know they can get away with 20 over.
But you're just talking about announce, like essentially announcing it or posting it, like not putting up a sign, because I think the sign just has to say.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
It's a camera in use.
Into the public, and I don't know, like, you put it in the newspaper, this road will now be 15 miles an hour, like, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll find out, I'll see if there's something that needs to be done there.
I agree, I think we should just come up with a good.
Look, and I'm reading the statute right here. Definitions, automated traffic informer means device designed, let's see, posted. A exceeds the posted speed limit by 10 or more miles per hour. No, that's not what I'm looking for.
Right, we'll find out. So, I'm going to move on, on to number three on our agenda, and we have some minutes from meetings to approve, so I need a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of October 1, 2025. Second? Eric wasn't here.
That's right.
Okay, I'll second, and all those in favor? And then, the next one is to approve the minutes of our special meeting on October 2nd.
So.
Favor? Obviously, there's no changes, right, guys? Okay, correspondence? I don't see any, right? We have no correspondence. Just some things to catch you guys up on. Lake Hayward has finally received their deep permit to do their dam repairs. Their dam repairs. So, now they're moving forward as far as how to figure out how to pay for that. So, we had a conversation actually with the folks from Lake Hayward and Val, and they're going to go in and talk to land use, and they're going to go in and figure out inland and wetlands, and public works and all that, but just so you know that we're finally at a point where after, I don't know, two, three, four years, they finally got their permit from deep, so, things are finally moving for them. I just heard today that the bridge load restrictions are going to be lifted by the end of the week on the Swift Bridge. So, if you know anybody who's been struggling with the load restriction, it's now being lifted by the end of the week, all the signs will be taken down. So, my assumption is it's going to go back to whatever it was before, which was like, I don't know, 100 tons or whatever it was, I'm trying to get clarification on that, but whatever it was prior to the repairs, that's where it's going back to, so, you know, it's not at 10, you know, 10,000 or whatever it is now.
16.
At 16? I don't know.
1,000 pounds or tons.
Yeah, so anyways, it's going back, yeah, so it's definitely going back to where it was before, so, that's good news. So, if you know of anybody, I've had a couple of inquiries asking about that, and so, we'll be getting back to them tomorrow on that, so, just so you know about that. And then, I wanted to give you roads update, because all of a sudden, finally, we're getting some of these roads done, but we did have Sheepskin Hollow, that bridge finally got repaired, the sleeve, and so, it was, in August, it was sleeved and then paved on the north side, and now, the south side is being paved now. Jones Hill has been done with a shim overlay, and then, right now, Smith and Alger are being done, and Daniels. So, those are going to be done in the next couple of weeks, and then, hoping for Cove Road is the last one to get done now, before the fall, before the, you know, the asphalt closes, and then, in the spring, Maple Ave and Great Hillwood will both be done. So, lots of good roads, but I just figured I would let you know that that's the roads update as of now.
Is that on, is that on the DPW page?
Yes, yep, yep, and so, you know, it's being updated each time it does it, but I just figured I'd give you guys, you know, a heads up, and that actually ends up being almost 17 miles of road since Michelle first started trying to get all this stuff done, so, we're getting there, it's good stuff. So, I just want to let you know about that, and then, lastly, is October 25th is Drug Takeback Day. So, if you hadn't heard that, that's coming up in a couple of weeks, so that'll be, I know they do it here, and I think maybe they do it at the pharmacy, too, but there'll be more information coming out as to exactly where and when they'll be, but usually, they're here.
It's here, the press.
Station that you can bring in, so, that's coming. Public comment.
Say Halloween is the 31st, and the Village one is the 18th.
Right. Okay, yeah, okay. So, yeah, so there's the first selectment report for this week. Tax incremental financing policy approval. I talked to both land use as well as P and Z, and they appreciated the, you know, the the talk to about it, it's not really in their wheelhouse, but they appreciate it, and they're going to share the policy with P and Z. But Board of Finance is going to look at it on their meeting next week.
I sent it to EDC, too.
Planning and zoning actually looked at it last night, they were a little confused, because the top of the document says that it was adopted by the Board of Selectment on October 1st, which is, we discussed it, but we actually didn't vote on anything.
And I sent it to them, and the email that I sent to them, I said, please disregard the date on the top, because it didn't happen, you know.
That was the feedback that I got.
I got it as a PDF, so, you know, and it came from coming that way, because I assumed we would do it on the 1st, but I pointed it out to both the Board of Finance, EDC, and Planning and Zoning to please disregard the October 1st, it was not approved by the Board of Selectment.
I'm just, we didn't write this, this was their policy.
And I said, and I did say to the person that I was speaking to, I think it was supposed to say draft, we didn't, we discussed it, but not voted, so, just throwing that out there then.
So, we'll have this back from Board of Finance, and then, we'll look at it at our next Board of Selectment meeting in November. But just so you know, I just want to give you updates on where it is and what I heard.
So, wait, so Planning and Zoning saw it, Board of Finance will see it, and is it also going to EDC?
It came from EDC, no, no. It came redevelopment, that's right.
Sent it to EDC and named me on.
Okay, okay. This week.
So, I was just going to say tomorrow.
Yep. Okay, so, we won't do anything with that yet. We do have a grant acceptance, though. So, we have a grant for the Emergency Management Performance Grant that we get every year, and it is $5,407.25 from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
It's an amendment to what you did last meeting, because I originally got a $5,000 amount.
Came up a little bit different.
And then, Craig got an email that said it was a little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit more, gave for more.
So, it's entitled "The Fiscal Year 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant" and said, "Acceptance of said grant to the Board of Finance and that to town meeting for approval." Do I have the motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Bye. Very much. Next up is, we have some board and commission changes. We have Jay Fortner, who has applied to be a member of the East Hattam Sustainability Team to serve until the desired certification level has been achieved, and if I can have a motion for appoint Jay Fortner.
I gladly meet that motion.
Favor? Okay, so we have some tax refunds to award, so the tax refunds and the amounts presented are $370.31 to Nissan Infinity LTLLC, $414.78 to Honda Lease Trust, $729.47 to Claire Simpson, $1,010.74 to Nissan Infinity LTLLC, and $252.48 to Honda Lease Trust. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else that the selectmen would like to discuss?
I just want to remind everyone at the Sustainable Connecticut. Ceremony is the 28th at the Good, at the Goodspeed, which is nice that it's right here in our town. And then, Riverfest, Eight Mile, Eight Mile River Watershed Partnership Alliance is doing their Riverfest on Saturday, there's a lot of stuff going on on Saturday, there's the Candy Drop Airport, but Riverfest, if nobody could say it out. I'm not actually involved in the planning, it's just one of my favorite events, because.
Yeah, it's a good event.
There's good food, good music, they're going to have live possums.
Live possums?
Yeah, they have a possum rescue place, they, they came the last Riverfest.
That was the name of the, I thought that that was the name of the band.
Well, it may also be the name of the band, I don't know the name of the band, but they, they were there two years ago, because they do Riverfest every other year, so they came two years ago. I couldn't go, because I was ill, but it was hugely popular, and you can actually have an opportunity to get that possum, that's something near and to.
Katie pulls them out of the chicken shed, and it's like, Mom, look what I got, it's nice, put it down.
And it's also Thunder in the Valley, right, on Saturday, right, yeah, there's a lot going on on Saturday.
Lot going on, on around. Okay, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay, we have to hold a special meeting, because we have to send.
I have a couple of things, like the EMPG grant, I'm just trying to close up this administration stuff to a town meeting on November 5th at night, and close up everything that, you know, this administration has approved, but I got a little screwed up this month, because Board of Finance is meeting a week later because of the holiday, or else, they would have met this past Monday, and I would have been able to do the town meeting call up tonight. But there are things that they have to approve on their side, meaning the early voting grant, the EMPG grant, I think there's one other thing. I think they might have a transfer of some funds to.
EMP stuff.
Yeah, EMPG and the, and the, the early voting grant for sure, but I think they had some fund transfers, too. I'm going to go through, make sure everything's there, but I have to let them. Um, I'm gonna go through, make sure everything's there, but I have to let them do their part first before we can call the town meeting. So I was looking for a special meeting, and I have a timeframe with the, with the newspaper. To get it in, the twenty-second, I'm looking at like, what do we say, three, four, five o'clock? It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, okay. I'm good. I'm just gonna put it in now, and then when you. Four o'clock? Does that work for you, Jack?
Yeah, I should be. And then I'll just have the call ready, and then another thing I'll probably have on that meeting, I asked Michelle if she could pull together the um. Um, snowplow solicitation recommendation.
Oh, right, yeah, so we actually have two vendors who have answered.
Out of the forty-something I sent out.
Something that we sent out, we got two. It's crazy, but that's one more than we had last year, that's double what we had last year.
So just to confirm, uh, Wednesday, October twenty-second at four o'clock.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor? So much. So the last night meeting.
Board, thank you.
So much.
Thank you for an entertaining year.
Yeah, okay. Is that what you call it?
We have a afternoon meeting.
We have an afternoon meeting, then we'll have.